Just happy to be here. Yeah, every time, I'm just happy to be here. Just happy to be here. Screwed up vacation, but that's okay. Screwed up vacation, but that's okay. We didn't. The wife was in the hospital. She went in the hospital two days before we were supposed to leave. No, we didn't go. Not bad. She's out, I mean, she got out six days. Same ongoing stuff she's had for years. Just snuck up at the wrong time. Well, they know what to do. But you can't do it at home. You gotta do it there.
You said you was talking to Mr. Culpepper. Who's Culpepper?
Is the micro-
I would like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of City Council, October 23, 2023. First order is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Wanda, could you do roll call?
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wasniak.
Here.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Here.
Hansel.
Here.
Okay, everyone's present. Thank you for that. Next item is citizen input. As a reminder, please be sure to speak into the microphone and you have three minutes to speak. And the first speaker is Linda Lloyd of Fairway Drive.
Hi there. I wanted to speak first about the tanyard rezoning request. I wanted to make sure all the council members knew that the planning commission meeting, that this was brought forward. Two of us, two of the planning commission members, were out of the country, so we did not have the opportunity to vote on this item. Had I been there, I would have very enthusiastically pushed for acceptance of that item. Next thing is about the plans that we got at the work session for this really wonderful administrative complex. I'd like to send big kudos to Chief Sims, the mayor, Doug Tapp, Kleiner, and anybody else that was involved in putting these plans together. Having a... Since Bella Vista doesn't have a downtown, having a signature building like this at that intersection is a really fantastic idea, and it would help point out that Bella Vista is no longer Northwest Arkansas's stepsister. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any council member reply?
I... It's not got anything to do with this here, but there is a gentleman who's gonna be here tonight who's 91-plus years old, and he didn't want to get up and speak, so I said I'd say a few words for him. He lives over on Dalton, and the house next door is just now going up, and they're gonna put a pickleball court in his backyard, and it's relatively close to his house. He's very concerned, not so much that it's there, but the noise it could create and possible traffic problems later in the evening. He's also heard stories that they may even light it, which means they'd be there later. His biggest concern is, as close as it is to his house and the noise involved with that game. He's wondering how that ever got approved, and if... My concern is, when that got approved, if we're gonna do something like a pickleball court, what's next? Sand volleyball or one of those beanbag courts that you're hearing about so much on TV? So how far are we willing to go to put things in that may be just a little bit off the ball?
Okay, thank you. Now, I think you can reply to it separately. That issue has been brought to people's attention, and I know the planning commission's had some communication with them about that. Next item is action on the minutes. September 25, 2023, regular meeting. Any thoughts on that?
Second.
That's Mr. Wilms and Mr. Snow. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Next one is the October 9, 2023 special meeting. Any comments on those minutes?
Will they be approved?
Second.
That was Mr. Snow and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Abstain, I was absent from the meeting.
Fowler.
Abstain, I was absent as well.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Motion carries 402. Okay, next one is reports. We got the August 31 financials, and I would note, total operating revenue is up 7.6% compared to last year. County sales tax is up 9.3%, city sales tax is up 3.9%, and the total operating expenses are 9.4% under what was budgeted, so that's through August 31. And we still have a healthy reserve balance of cash, so the financials have been pretty consistent for the last few months in being positive. Let's see. Next item on the... Well, first, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel.
Roll call vote. Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. And next one is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-50620, county parcel number 16-70260-003, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And if you'll recall, this is a parcel that's a little bit over an acre that's right across the street from the tanyard, the current tanyard driving range building. Is there any discussion?
If you recall, I questioned as to why all of the others had been approved and this one was not, so my question has been answered, and I have no reason not to support it.
Well, you got... I make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel with the motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'll read the ordinance for the third and final time. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-50620, county parcel number 16-70260-003, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
No.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Next item is a resolution adopting a comprehensive safety action plan and Vision Zero policy. There was some discussion of this and explanation last week at the work session. Does anybody want to discuss it?
I still feel like it encompasses about all of Northwest Arkansas except Bella Vista.
I don't know if people saw the email from Justin Culpepper today. He sent a little summary out about it, which I thought was helpful.
It was a nice summary.
Yeah.
No one else has comments. I have a couple observations, I guess. It's a very thorough report, a very complicated report. Bella Vista is really only a small piece of the pie on the overall scheme of things. We only have, if I understand the report correctly, one project along Bella Vista Way, which is US 71 corridor from South City Limits going up to roughly Kingsland, maybe, or thereabouts, maybe to Trafalgar. And the program or proposal is to use the shoulders, the paved shoulders, on that section of pavement of 71 to stripe them and restrict it, making it a, basically, a pedestrian-bike corridor along there. Corridor for bikes mostly, but pedestrians could use it to provide a better safety corridor for those coming up from the south. Now, we have the Back 40 Trail, which is an option for them to get into Bella Vista. My apprehension is, is that with our 2040 plan, it outlines a need for Bella Vista to look at other modes, modes of transportation for pedestrians, for bicyclists, in the streets that we have in the city. Now, that includes 340, 279, and obviously, US Highway 71, but it also impacts on our other major thoroughfares within the city that are owned by the city. And those would require widening in order to accommodate any bicycle accommodation. Under Arkansas law, a couple of years ago, they reiterated or reaffirmed the fact that bicyclists have the same right to roadways as do automobiles, and I've seen lots of complaints on social media and otherwise directly in the inbox, my inbox, complaining about bicyclists slowing traffic, blocking traffic, creating a traffic hazard on some of our streets. And in fact, that's true. I've encountered that myself. But that's not in the plan here. In the plan here, it only shows accommodation along Highway 71, which is an existing corridor. The pavement is existing. It probably requires some cleanup, fix-up, and preparing it for striping or separation of the laneage on the shoulder for the bicyclists from the vehicles. There's 8th Street in Bentonville. If you go down I Street and cross at the intersection with 8th Street, you'll find looking west, there's a huge bicycle corridor running in two directions along the south side of that street, which is brand-new, ideal for bicyclists and safety. I don't know if that's an approach that would be ideal for Bella Vista. I do think that there are corridors that we have, our major arterial system example, to widen, not consecutively along its entire length, because in some areas, you drive along the road, it has a nice grass shoulder, you could accommodate a widening, but then all of a sudden you hit a holler that runs right up to the edge of the road. That's a problem. It's a problem to try and extend a pavement through that area to provide continuity. So we would have some glitches in any widening project for bicyclists on our thoroughfares, but it would be, it would improve the safety. That's a, that's an economic impact on the city. It is an impact that's recited in our 2040 plan without being specific, but in general says we need to do that. So there hasn't been any specific planning for it. It's not in this plan. Mr. Culpepper says it won't be in this plan. This plan does say, however, that we need to assess how we can address any safety concerns about pedestrians and bicyclists in the city. So that brings us back to our 2040 plan, since we need to do it. So we have some options. I don't think it's mandatory. I was apprehensive at the work session that this would obligate us to a huge financial issue in the future to meet any goals or objectives in here, but our comprehensive plan is a guide, and this is a guide, and so between them, I think we can address where we have real needs or where we can address real needs. So I'm in support of the plan. I would opt to recommend to the council that we not act on it tonight, to approve it, give ourselves another month to read through it, let our residents become familiar, and look at it, provide any input that they may wish. I had one email, I think, that came always from a lady member of our city that said that she was supportive of the plan, so.
Well, this isn't anything that commits us to anything financially or monetarily right now. It's just that it says that we support the future vision.
The only item that's in, the only item in there for Bella Vista is one segment of 71, basically from Trafalgar down to the city limits, to stripe it for bicyclists, basically what it is.
Yeah.
And that's...
It just could morph, you know, over and over again until any actual implementation starts or begins, so. It's just saying that we support the vision.
Yeah.
So.
Motion to approve.
Second. That's Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Snow.
No.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed five to one. Next resolution is accepting the financial audit report presented by the four of us, LLP, for the year ending December 31, 2022. And this was reviewed by representatives of four of us at our work session last week, and they didn't find any significant errors, and basically gave the finance director a clean bill of health, I would say. So any, any more discussion about it?
I don't have any discussion about it. I just say this is one of those things I've read several times over now, and I've learned to flip to the last page, right? Because there's so much detail. I mean, it's really lengthy. But it's that, "In our opinion, management's assertion that the city of Bella Vista, Arkansas complied in all material respects with the aforementioned requirements for the year ended December 31, 2022." And, you know, I'd really like to give Kim, you know, kudos. I, you know, have had the opportunity to get her, get to know her really well. You know, she's come on board with the city, and I think she does a really fantastic job, and she really understands what it is that she's supposed to do, you know, as far as like managing financials of a city in particular, right? So I said, I'd just like to give her, you know, a big, a big thanks, because she's responsible for, you know, putting everything together and overseeing all of our financial activity, so.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wasniak.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next resolution is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment with Kleiner Construction Management, Inc., in the amount of $2,659,813.41 for the renovation and remodeling of the former police station, Phase 1A and 1B, for use by fire station number one. And Chief Sims went over this at the work session, and I just want to point out the $2,659 figure is cumulative. It includes $367,000 or so we approved in a prior meeting. So is there any discussion?
No, I'd just like to say that, in response to Ms. Lloyd's comments, I think they were right on. This has been a, this is an excellent project, and will bring the city administration all in, all in one building, one area, and that it will be as much needed and will be an outstanding project.
Agreed. Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero. Next one is resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with One Con Company LLC in an amount not to exceed $596,200 for the construction of a street department wash bay and approving a budget amendment in the amount of $390,000. That's in the capital expenditure portion of the budget, the 390.
I'd like to make a motion that this be, go back for a redesign and a reconsideration or redesign, and I will point out my reasons. $500,000, well, $600,000 now is just an excessive amount for a truck wash bay. Just as a comparable, $600,000 builds a nice home. $600,000 builds or buys two dump trucks. And lots of other things. I mean, it's one of those things that inflation has driven up to an excessive amount, but unfortunately, I don't know, you have to deal with inflation, but it's not buying what is inflated. Karen and Dan are, have some very valid reasons as to wanting to proceed with this project, and I can't disagree with them because they need the facility. It is much needed, but, and I'm not voting against their need, I'm voting against the cost. And, excuse me, I, I think it could be reconsidered and can the cost be come down quite a bit from actually what is needed. I have a, I've looked at two different, DEQ referred me to two different locations. One is the Eagle Ready Mix in Rogers, and another one is Scott Equipment County down in Springdale, which has nothing compared to what we're talking about as a wash bay. Plus, we've been under miscommunication or misunderstanding for some time, that DEQ dictates what has to be built. It has to have a roof over it, it has to have two sides on it, et cetera, and that's not the case. They do not dictate that. That is a, they, all they do is inspect the site, and your site, and either, they either agree with it or don't agree with it. And a simple concrete slab with the necessary drains to filter that water, like in, for instance, the Eagle Ready Mix and Rogers, they're washing out concrete trucks, and it goes into one pit and filters and goes to another one, then goes to another one. They use the water to, they recycle the water to wash the trucks with. So it's nothing compared to what we're looking at here. So it's, that is nice and would be a nice facility, but is it necessary for what the, the need or necessary for what is to be accomplished? So again, I'm voting against it and making a motion that it be reconsidered.
Okay, there is a motion to reconsider, so is there a...
Well, there's no, procedurally, there's nothing to reconsider. I'm not, I think what Mr. Snow's trying to do, and I'm not, you tell me what you want to do. I think you want to table this and have it further, have internal consideration and discussion, and then something else brought back.
Table it for reconsideration, yes.
Okay.
Well, table it basically indefinitely.
Or until, table it until a certain time or indefinitely?
Table it for a reasonable time so that it can be redesigned and to a, something that would accommodate the street department. So 90 days?
To the January meeting?
Is there more conversation that could happen before this table motion is moved forward and voted on?
The mayor recognized Mr. Snow who made a motion.
Yeah.
And I think that there, and I'm just trying to clarify what the motion is. And then there'd need to be a second. And then there would be debate on that motion. If there's no second, then you'll just proceed with discussion on the item. So I think, I think what Ms., again, I think he's asking to table it for 90 days, which will be the January regular meeting.
Okay. Motion to table till January 2024.
And then there would need to be a second on that motion.
Is there a second?
So that motion would die for lack of a second.
Okay.
And then now you're back where you were.
Jim, did you want to say something?
I think just me and Doug will probably hear. But this is not the first time this has come up. And at one point in time, it was like $360,000. And we couldn't afford it then, so we said we'd wait. And then as you look at every other thing we've done for the last four, five years, everything has gone up way past what we ever thought it was. So if we go ahead and play games with this and move it again, it's only going to get worse before it gets better. And they know what they need a whole lot better than we know what we think they need. So, you know, they're called, they need what they had. We did it before. We saved a couple grand, a couple hundred grand. But it is what it is now. And if we don't do it now, it's just going to get worse.
All right.
I think Ms. Hunt and her assistant have delved into this thing a little bit more after, after the meeting and have found that this is probably the going price because there were two bids within $4,000 or $5,000 of each other that were the first and second little bidder. Ms. Hunt, do you have some things to say? She's done some investigation on the bids and has some comments. And I think it's reflective of the high intensity of construction in northwest Arkansas for these kinds of projects that has been here for the last couple of years and will be here probably for some years ahead of us. So be prepared. Put on your seatbelt.
If I, if I may say, Mayor, I agree that Karen and Dan, they have know much more about what we need than I do or that we do. All I can say is that I have looked at other facilities. And in order to meet the requirements of DEQ, we do not have to have as elaborate facility as being proposed. We do not have to have a $600,000 facility in order to be able to wash our trucks and equipment.
May I add something to that? Instead of viewing this as a $600,000, what did the initial cost? When this started seven years ago, it was $180,000?
$174,000 was our original estimate.
There you go. So we're talking about a $174,000 facility at the start. This thing has been kicked down the road, seven years. I think there's been ample time, past councils. What was it, two or three years ago, 220?
224.
Why don't we pass it then, that 224?
Well, we never actually brought it for a vote or anything. I think there were other things, and I hear you. But what I think is allow Karen some time. She did some follow-up to Mr. Snow's, a couple of comments that he made and found out some additional information. So we might want to hear that.
Yeah, Karen, do you want to talk about what you did in the last week?
There was a few things that came up after last week's work session. And I can start with that if you'd like. So after last week's work session, the sticker shock had led to some additional informal discussions and drummed up some questions and also recommendations. So every question was researched. Every recommendation was considered. One of the questions focused primarily on the canopy to see if maybe that was the reason that the price was higher than what we were expecting it to come in at. All three bids were reviewed. The canopy came in at less than 50 grand on all three of them across the board. There was some discussion if you change the canopy type, maybe the block could be changed and then you'd have to re-engineer. So additional engineering costs. But I was able to get to the bottom of the canopy question. Then the main question obviously was the overall price. I did reach out to two of the contractors who put in bids to see if any one-line items stood out to them in particular that would have raised the cost. They agree with everything you're seeing up here. It's just the market rate right now for this type of a project. So having satisfied both of those questions, I spoke with Snow about him reaching out to the ADQ and to find out specifically were the roof and the walls required. And the short answer is no. However, ADQ's general recommendation is to have the walls and the roofs. So I spoke with the gentleman at Bentonville ADQ, Will Cody, and he had referenced the other locations that Mr. Snow had brought up. Eagle Ready Mix had three pits where their solids separate and they are able to recycle the water. Scott Equipment Company in Springdale has two holding pits that filter and then it goes into a storm drain. He couldn't give specific guidance or concrete answers other than that's their recommendation, not a state requirement. So he referred me to Zachary Carroll, who specializes in the ADQ ARG-75 permits, which is a car wash permit. And in order for us to go without walls and a roof, we would need a pad large enough in design so that water could not run onto or off of the pad, including overspray. The overspray could not leave the wash area. And there could be no wet on the edges of the wash pad. And any wetness would be considered, and I quote, "evidence of a discharge into the environment," and then also a violation. So those two design concepts, though they work for those individual sites, these are site-specific, and they do not fit our needs nor our space. The space that we have right now was designed for a wash bay. It's been on the list since 2016 when we started the street department. If we were to try to move it to a location where there was more room for a larger bay, or, excuse me, a larger pad, we would also have to run the utilities to that location as well at another expense, along with the engineering to design that. So in being good stewards of the taxpayer money, I do feel that delay in this project keeps adding to the costs. I do think the responsible thing to do here is to build the wash bay. It not only satisfies our ADQ requirements for our industrial permit, which lets us run a street department on this property, but it's also for citywide use. We have 136 vehicles and fleet outside of the fire department, which has their own wash bays. It is good for the maintenance of our city fleet, cleaning the vehi, excuse me, cleaning the vehicles, repairing the vehicles, the welding, the efficiency of our department. What we're doing now is very time-consuming where we're using a pressure washer indoors where it's not designed to be used. And to do that pad where you can't have water on the edge of it, we would be teetering a really fine line between compliance and non-compliance at all times. So I do feel it's in the best interest of the city to do this project right and correctly the first time, know that we're in compliance and not have to revisit this year after year. So respectfully, I am requesting a contract award to the low bidder as well as the financial transfer to cover the cost of following the project through.
Wendy?
Ms. Hunt, do we know, the other two businesses that were referenced, do we know when their bays were built and how much it might cost to build those bays?
I don't have that information.
Okay, but probably not like past year.
No, I think they're pretty, they're long-term.
Probably a better price several years ago.
Chief, did you want to say something?
I'm pretty much just in support of this. Just, and some of the council members, we built this building. We spent money to run power out there.
You can get up to the bikes, yeah, for the TV video.
Yeah, when we built a building, we ran, thinking ahead for this, we ran power out to that area, water out to that area, and also upgraded our lift station to support that extra flow from that area. So that's just, just for council to consider. That area was already sort of prepped for this sort of, this sort of building in use.
Okay. Thank you. Larry?
I guess for clarification, the fact that the drainage from this new proposed wash bay will be collected after the sediment is removed and channeled to the sewage treatment plant or the wastewater flow currently. So as a result of that, it engages the need for us to have an ADQ permit for that site.
Yes, the ADQ permit specifically for the wash would not be needed. We would still have to maintain our industrial ADQ permit to do our street work here at our department.
But that's...
But we would no longer be held to the requirement of the car wash permit.
Motion to approve. Thank you.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Wasniak. A roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to one.
Mayor, before you make your announcements, you know, I mentioned the pickleball court. What was the reasoning, Doug, that we went ahead and said that would be acceptable? Because I thought that sport was headed, but obviously not.
Sure. We met with the gentleman, and we've also met with the builder. I can provide you lots of details after the meeting if you want. Basically, we sat down with him. There's nothing in code that doesn't allow recreation in the backyard, basketball court, swimming pool, putting greens, all of which exist on his street. He's on the golf course, so you've got loud equipment on the golf course. But yeah, there's nothing in our code or the ACC documents that prevent...
Okay, so his only recourse would be noise after a certain time or parking if he invited half the country to play pickleball?
Correct. If he started charging for people to pay there, that would violate...
Well, I don't think that'll happen. It'd be a noise thing and a car thing, unless they quit.
Lights, we're dealing with the lights right now. That could be a problem. But we're trying to find a way to deal with it.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Okay.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, announcements. Our next council work session is 5:30 PM on Monday, November 13 at Bella Vista District Court. Next city council regular meeting is 6:30 PM on Monday, November 20 at Bella Vista District Court. Planning Commission work session is 4:30 PM on Tuesday, November 2 at Bella Vista District Court. Planning Commission regular meeting is 4:30 PM on Monday, November 13 at Bella Vista District Court. Board of Construction Appeals is 3 PM Tuesday, November 14, if necessary, at Bella Vista District Court. So with that, we're adjourned. Larry?
One more thing. Most of you know that my wife passed away on October 9. We'll have a memorial service on November 9 at 3 o'clock at our church, which is halfway between Bella Vista and Hawassie. I want to thank the Weekly Vista. I found out that they were doing an article about Jane's service to the city and the early happenings of the city of 2007. So I want to thank them and thank you all.
Thank you, Larry. Yes, Jane was the first city clerk at City Bella Vista, which was very momentous since we'd been run by the POA many years. And it was a city for the first time starting in January 1, 2007. So she was city clerk for two terms, I believe, right? Yeah, eight years. Thank you very much. With that, we're adjourned.